Call this regular school committee meeting to order Monday, September 11th at 6:00 PM. Executive session is not necessary at this time. Calling to order and a salute to the flag, Mr. Walsh.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, you can't turn those off.
I wasn't sure if I was going to roll.
Really?
Didn't cover my feet.
My feet are too.
My feet are damp.
Yep.
Flash flood body.
No kidding.
Me.
Yeah.
School committee members and student reports, school committee chair report, nothing at this time. Resource committee, Mr. Stevens.
Nothing at this time.
School building needs, Mr. Stevens.
Nothing at this time.
Policy committee, Mr. Horgan is not with us. Student support committee, Dr. Knight is not with us. School personnel committee, that's me, and I have nothing to report at this time. Executive committee, nothing as well. And student reps, take it away.
Good evening, fellow school committee members. It is so great to be with you all again today after a long summer.
We've had a long summer packed with many fun events and activities. I'd like to firstly give a shout out to those involved in the summer program hosted at Fitchburg High School. It lasted from June 26th to July 29th. The program included so many different pursuits for kids to be able to explore interest. They may have along with work as well. They got to be involved in plays, digital media, field trips, and more.
Seniors at Fitchburg High had a great summer as well, in which we got to participate in many Fitchburg High traditions, such as painting the rock, senior sunrise, and painting senior parking spots. We also hosted a summer barbecue at Coolidge Park, and over 30 people attended. People got to play in a volleyball tournament while we served food such as hot dogs and burgers and played games. We had people of all grades in attendance, and it was extremely fun being able to bring people together.
As for the school year so far, students have been settling in well at Fitchburg High. I'd like to give thanks to our new administration and teachers for coming in and doing a great job so far with our students. Fall sports have started at Fitchburg High, and we've had our first football game, two soccer games, field hockey, and volleyball games already. Our teams have been training and working hard all summer for their season, so I'd like to give them a great shout out as well. Go Red Raiders.
And another shout out to our new Red Raiders, Journey Young and Denny Sa Fuentez. I hope you will all be able to see them hype up the crowd at our next football game. Because there is not much to report at this time, I'd like for everyone to take a moment to recognize and remember the lives we've lost today, 22 years ago. Today is September 11th, and as all of you know, it is an extremely devastating yet important day for our country. To not only acknowledge the lives we lost, but to appreciate life and all of its worth. Thank you so much.
Any questions? Comments? Thank you for mentioning 9/11, and it's one of those events that you always remember where you were. And we'll continue to make it a special day every year. This is 22nd year?
22nd.
22nd. Seems like yesterday. Okay, approval of the minutes from the previous school committee meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion made. Seconded to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there's unanimous communications. No one wishing to make a public communication, seeing none public comment. Is there anyone in the queue?
No one's in the queue.
Okay. Give it a couple of seconds here. All right, superintendents report.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, thank you, everyone. So we have a few items on the agenda this evening. The first item that we'd like to... She's for the...
Oh, she is?
Yep.
Okay.
So the first item we'd like to discuss this evening is the Thanksgiving football game. The Fitchburg Public Schools and Lemmister Public Schools have been approached by the Fenway Sports Group to have this year's Thanksgiving football game held at Fenway Park. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for our students and community. This evening, we have Kristin Hudak with us, Senior Coordinator of Events for the Boston Red Sox, joining us virtually. Hi, Christina.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Great. And we have our athletic director, Todd Robbins, here to talk more about this opportunity.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for having me back on such a short turnaround. So it must be important if somebody scheduled the athletic director, like within two meetings of each other. But it's great to be here this evening and to discuss, obviously, this very important opportunity for this rivalry, obviously, the 143rd playing between Lemmister and Fitchburg, the 117th Thanksgiving Day Classic is the game that we are referring to. So this is certainly an event of great and monumental importance to this region. And obviously, the conversations that I have been having, both with my counterparts in Lemmister, as well as, obviously, those within our small, tight-knit administrative team, really have been to discuss just how important this game is to the community and how important this decision is as we look at moving forward. It is not something that anyone takes lightly by any stretch of the imagination. But that said, very few tremendous opportunities come the way of an event that is 143 meetings old. And I believe the opportunity for a game that began in 1894 to play in a ballpark that was built in 1912 doesn't get much more special than that. And that is the opportunity before us today. I'll yield to Kristin to give her at least the opportunity to sort of set the table to, obviously, what Fenway was proposing, and I can give you a little more background on what we've seen with games in the past.
Yeah. Hi, everyone. Just wanted to start off by saying thank you so much for having us and even giving us the opportunity to speak with you all today. So just a little bit about what we do and kind of the history of our special events and then high school football here at Fenway. So our department really looks to utilize Fenway Park to, obviously, program this area 365. That includes a college football bowl game that we do in September or in December, hockey, and football. Obviously, we're talking about high school football here at Fenway. So over the past seven years, we've been tasked to bring iconic rivalries here to Fenway Park. Obviously, Lemmister versus Fitchburg is very, very historic in this state, and we actually have reached out a few times. So we are hoping that third time is the charm and that we can host you here. Again, we, as Todd mentioned, are a place of history and understand the importance of moving this game here to Fenway Park. It's no easy feat. We did have to do this with Harvard Yale a few years ago, and we're successful in doing that. So really want to continue building upon the history of this rivalry of our ballpark and kind of the special events to come over the next few years. So happy to provide more information about the event as a whole, around logistics, marketing, anything that we can do to help the community get to Fenway Park, because we obviously understand that it is a little bit of a distance. But again, we're really here to collaborate and work with you all. Thank you.
As you can see, they are very serious in what they are attempting to do here and really trying to, of course, find the best series to bring forth and showcase on this stage. Christina is correct, three other times, this being the third time, this opportunity has been extended to these communities. And I believe this is the time uniquely this year to do it. There's a couple of things, obviously. Construction in the area of Crocker Field certainly is one of the things where we're concerned as to whether those will ultimately be available streets by the time we reach Thanksgiving morning. So that is certainly one aspect of this. The ability to use Crocker Field, it has been an incredibly wet summer and continues to be an incredibly wet summer. So the playing surface, which usually, obviously, in just the limited number of games that it hosts, does tend to take a significant beating and also limits the games that I can bring to Crocker Field at this point in time. That's a different project for a different day. But at this point in time, we can only run about five to six football games a year on that playing surface before it turns the mud. If this opportunity comes at the right time, in both Fenway Park situation, where they are as a host to a bowl game at the college level, right, as long as they are continuing to do that, they would continue to convert. We know that that will run at least another three years or so. We know that, obviously, as we look at kind of the timeline we're looking at for our turf project here at Fitchburg, that turf project will be in place by the next time we host Thanksgiving. So we certainly wouldn't be in the market to attempt to move this game when it comes around again, because we're going to want to showcase the fantastic job we do in really bringing this gem of Crocker Field up to its modern-day standard. So this year, unique in opportunity to do it, our football coach, Paul DiGeronimo, has spoken to the senior class and asked them sort of how they would feel about the opportunity to move their game, and overwhelmingly, they said, yes, they want to play this game at Fenway Park. And that is, to me, the guiding light of what we do here in athletics and in education, is to provide the opportunities to our students, and in my case, student athletes. And our student athletes and our senior class spoke very clearly, they want to go to Fenway Park, and they want to beat Lemmister when they do it.
Good. Mr. Robbins, I had a conversation with the superintendent last week regarding some of... I mean, I'm sure you're going to work out some of these details, but buses, cost, and I'm talking about the folk.
Yeah, price per ticket.
So, yeah. I mean, that's something I would like to see. But I think this is a great opportunity, and what a great opportunity for these young people to play at Fenway Park. I mean, that's... Doesn't happen every day, so.
Got a chance to witness it a little bit last year, teaching, obviously, in Watertown before I came here. Watertown and Belmont's series last year played their 100th game. They chose to relocate it to Fenway Park for their 100th game.
Now, you mentioned this "we" had come up before?
Mm-hmm.
Really?
Twice before. Passed on twice.
Oh, "we" passed on?
We passed on.
Oh, okay.
That's my understanding. Yep.
Yep. I never knew that.
Yeah, me neither.
As a media member, I was aware of the first offer, not the second. And obviously...
How long ago was this?
This was pre-COVID, probably five, six, maybe seven years ago, give or take, at that time. And I mean, wonderful things do happen. This offer came to us on my very first day on the job. We met with Fenway Park on my third day on the job. So it's going to be hard to top that first week for anybody.
We've been a little persistent. We have been a little persistent. Sorry about that, Todd.
No, not at all. It was wonderful time. Good things come all at once. So what...
I'm speaking myself now.
Of course.
But I am chairman of the Fitchburg High School Alumni Association, of which we represent about 15,000 people, and I haven't spoken to my board about this, but I'm sure they would be for it. I'm also on the Hall of Fame Committee, and I'm also in the Hall of Fame for playing football at Fitchburg High School. I'm on the Crocker Field Restoration Committee. I got a call from somebody, and they said, "Well, Pete, you're a traditionalist. Do you want to go to Fitchburg High? Go to..." I said, "Absolutely." I said, you know, and this is also my 65th year from graduating from Fitchburg High School, and we'll be holding our 65th reunion and going to a game this year. And we are for it. And I think this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for the kids to go to Fenway Park and play Lemmister. And who knows, maybe that group will line up in the Hall of Fame too, you know?
If nothing else, they will walk away with a phenomenal story of having gotten to play in a historic venue.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
You had to interrupt first.
Sure.
I think this is a great opportunity, but I was just wondering how, like, is there a limit to the amount of students that will get busing Tuesday? Or is there even a busing situation?
I was going to talk about that.
Sorry.
Absolutely. So what I would like to propose to the committee is that we pay for all transportation. We have funds available in ESAR and in transportation that anyone who wants to get there, whether student or a community member, will be able to ride the bus, and we'll provide that transportation. So I hope that answers your question there. And then the other thing I would like to propose is that we, as a school district, pay for every student to attend if they would like to go. That would leave the community to actually have to pay for their ticket to get in. But those are my two asks for the committee, to be able to do that for the community.
Follow-up question to you, John. Mr. Thompson, sorry.
Yes.
All students in the districts, not just high school students, but middle school, elementary?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
And do we know yet, if this all happens, and I hope it does, would the game time be the traditional time, it's 10:00 in the morning?
And that's a really great question. So Fenway does not staff their facility on Thanksgiving Day. They host games on Tuesday and Wednesday night. We have been offered the prime-time slot, 6:30 on Wednesday night, just like the 2018 game, I believe it was, which got moved because of cold. And so it's a night that we know will work. It's a night that we know fans will respond to. They will be in the region, and they will be able to get there at a reasonable time. Of course, it is a half-day of school for us. So it seems like a perfect opportunity to have a wonderful rally, board buses, and head down to Fenway Park.
And you said Wednesday night?
It'll be Wednesday night, night before Thanksgiving. Thanksgiving, 6:30 kickoff.
Thank you. I just got a couple of questions. First of all, I think it's a great idea, great opportunity. But at the same time, I think about the community.
Sure.
Right? Do you think it's a good idea to get the community's input before we just make this decision? You know, maybe, I don't know, maybe do a survey or something, put it out to the community.
That was the next comment I'd like to make. We actually have a survey ready to go tomorrow that I like to send out to all students, families, and community members to get their feedback, to see what their questions are and their feelings about moving forward.
Okay.
So I have that ready to go. I was going to send that out tomorrow morning.
Thank you. And also, have we considered the financial impact? Because we host the game this year, right?
Mm-hmm.
So the gate receipts will be going to Fitchburg. So if we're going to pay our money for all these people to go and pay their tickets to get there, so we're kind of losing on both sides. Is the Fenway group going to contribute?
The good news is...
Maybe make a donation to the school or something? I don't know. I'm just asking.
No, no, no. That's a really good question. It was a question that both Lemmister and Fitchburg posed in the first meeting. I'll let Christina give the answer, and then maybe I can discuss it a little bit more. But Christina, can you go ahead?
Yep, of course. So we do cover all the costs from a venue, from security to ticket ushers. The only thing that we ask is Fitchburg staff it, like a regular home game, so a P.A. announcer, scoreboard operator, things like that. And then we also do give a percentage of the ticket revenue back to Fitchburg and Lemmister. We actually split it. But then that is up to both schools. If Lemmister decides to give the entire percentage to Fitchburg, that is in their decision, which I believe, Todd, I don't want to speak for you guys, that is what's happening. But again, I don't want to speak for you. So we will give a percentage back of the ticket revenues back to the school.
Thank you, Christina. So essentially, what I have worked out with my counterpart in Lemmister is that because moving forward, we are going to look, instead of a revenue-sharing model, we are going to look at sort of, if a game is played at Crocker Field, that revenue would remain at Crocker Field, Doyle Field stays in Lemmister, and so on. This year being sort of the first year of that, we worked out what a rough average would be for if a game was hosted at Crocker Field. That percentage would come to Fitchburg first. Anything exceeding that average would be a 50-50 split between the communities.
Okay. Thank you.
And then I... Sorry, one last thing. I will note on the ticket front, we will distribute complimentary tickets to the school as well, and also a suite, so you guys can have the suite for that evening, and actually for that day's suite as well.
So the more time you give me, the more thoughts I have. I hope that you're also considering vendors that would traditionally be working at both places, that it's an opportunity for them as well, perhaps to go. And the second thought that I had was, it would be nice if there was a common place that this could be shown on TV, maybe at the high school for those that can't attend. And can you make any provisions for the disabled?
Christina, I will let you speak to the venue's ability.
Yeah, no, we're fully ADA compliant facilities. So any... And then we also have... We do have resources here that will help. We'll staff it like a normal Red Sox game. So if anybody with disabilities does come and need support, we do have our fan services team there to help and support them.
So I didn't quite understand that. Was she referring... Were you referring to the disabled, that question?
Yes.
Yes.
I didn't quite understand what you said. Can you... Yeah, no, no, absolutely. So essentially, what she said was they will staff it, Fenway Park itself, the same way they would a Red Sox game during the regular season or postseason. So they will staff it. Their facility is fully ADA compliant. They have staff on hand to help people who are needed to get where they need to go.
How soon do you, Christina, need... How soon does Fenway need to know that this is what we want to do? What kind of time limit are we looking at?
I think we'll want tonight to vote for it. Tonight.
Soon. Very soon.
The reason I ask that, if we're sending out a survey whether or not to do this, do we vote tonight and say, yes, we're going to do this? If we kind of... If we want to get results from a survey, I'm just... That's why I ask. If we have to wait to vote until the survey goes out to the community?
I would think so.
Yeah.
And we don't have it as an action item, actually.
Okay, okay, okay.
I would... I don't think we should hold it up because of the survey, myself.
Appreciate that.
Should the survey be startlingly something posing it, or something startling come up, we could, you know, bring that up, I think.
Sure.
But I think it's important for all people to...
No, and administratively, I think what we've discussed is our real hope is what we can gain in information from the survey from people is how we can help them participate. You know, our interim superintendent has been very generous in wanting to help in any way we possibly can as a district to make it possible for the community to attend despite the distance. And with that in place, really, I hope what we can garner back in feedback is just, I need this or that, or if it's something that we haven't yet thought of, that we can sort of figure out where we can bolster sections for the community in order to make it possible for people to participate. But I firmly believe in what they call the Fenway effect, that this game will have a larger attendance than we would have traditionally seen at Crocker Field this year.
Just if I'm just may add a personal thing, in the year 2000, which was a big deal when the year changed...
Sure.
I sang with a choir on the field of Fenway Park, and it was... I was at second base. So I've always remembered that fond. It was a beautiful night, et cetera. So it'll be a lifetime memory.
Absolutely.
That's amazing. And we are also looking to do that as well, and apologies for not mentioning band performances, cheer performances, national anthem artists. Again, this is going to be treated like a home game for you guys. So we really want to provide the opportunity for all the different groups and not just the team itself, but really for the community.
And Christina, correct me if I'm wrong, as the home team, we would dress in the Red Sox clubhouse. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that yellow or red?
That's cool.
Tremendous opportunity for our student athletes to literally be basked in history.
Question around transportation and students participating in this historic event. Would the schools be responsible as if they were going on a field trip, or would we encourage parents to come along on the bus with them? Because I'm thinking...
Yeah, so we would encourage... We would encourage families to come with their students, and we've done this last year when we went to Worcester to see a play at Mechanics Hall. So we've Circus Olay. So we've... Do you want to... Jen, how have we handled that in the past? Parents have come and attended with us or met us there, right?
He had the option to drive or take the bus, and I would say a good chunk of parents chose, because they didn't want to have to do the parking in Worcester. And then in Boston, it was at the U at the Canis Arena, so they... A lot of parents did end up riding the buses, because they just didn't want to deal with the parking. So it actually worked out really well. I just sent out like an email to all the families, saying, hey, sign up. It's free, like, just at least. So I was able to track and work with Donna Hildreth and our transportation department to make sure we had enough buses going out. So the parents that really want to do this kind of stuff, they want to go with their kids, you know. It's a fun family day.
And travel for the football team would be the same as any other OA game. They'd be getting on the bus, and they would go to the field where they were playing.
And we will do everything we possibly can in order to make it a very special experience from boarding the bus to the game and the celebratory ride home.
So I think this is a time-sensitive issue. I don't think we can wait weeks on this. What I would like to propose is that I get that survey out tomorrow to students, families in the community, and give everyone to Friday to respond. And then I think the question is, what is next steps after that? Because our next meeting is not until October 2nd. And I know that they really would like us... I think they need our confirmation by the latest, probably next Monday, correct?
Correct, yep.
Christina, you think it's possible you could get Big Poppy to come down for the kids?
We've got a shout-out video once or twice. I won't say for high school football or maybe another event, so I can make an ask.
So I guess, based on us having a quick turnaround, if the survey results are in favor, is it fair to say that we can move forward? How does the committee like to move forward?
I would, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't...
And I don't know if this requires a vote.
It's an action item, so it doesn't require a vote, right?
Not an action item.
And I do think the most important group is in favor of this, the students at the high school and the football team.
We're all for it. We want this. We're all for it.
You want this, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I think more people will show up to this type of game if we do it there.
It'll also be really memorable, too, for like even the players and cheerleaders and band.
I think it'll bring back more pride and like joy when it comes to the Thanksgiving game, too.
You might get some more kids wanting to try out for the football team.
Well, and I truly, to that, to their point, I do hope this is sort of like the re-launching of excitement around us, right? If you look at the, you know, the potential over the next few years, between now and the next time we host Thanksgiving, where we are at Fenway Park this year, we get people excited about being a part of the Fitchburg-Lemmister rivalry again. They come out to Doyle Field for a great game next year, and then they come to a beautiful renovated Crocker Field for Thanksgiving in 2025. I mean, it is a phenomenal opportunity and an ability to really reinvigorate this region and get people excited about being Red Raiders again.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
As I said, if you give me time, I have lots of thoughts. I've seen football games on the TV where there will be a video highlight of the schools, the two schools that are played, and they're always so interesting. Maybe each school could have a project.
I know Fenway does request that. I know this from last year with Watertown and Belmont. They do request a hype video from each school and do allow them to be played before the games. It's also probably important to note as well, for those concerned about maybe wanting to watch the game, maybe they are from distance and won't be able to return to the region, Fenway does provide broadcast facilities for both communities to be able to have their own unique broadcast.
Maybe with individual pictures, too, of the teams, and the culture, of course.
Absolutely.
So I guess I will ask the committee for approval to move forward if the survey results on Friday show that majority of the students, families, and community would like to make this happen.
I'll make a motion that Mr. Thompson move forward with it on Friday. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
So I will send the final count to everyone on Friday, so you guys have those results, so you know what next steps are. I did have one question, Christina.
Yep.
And I think one of the school committee members asked, are we able to actually broadcast that game for our community?
Yep, yep. That's not a problem at all. Like Todd mentioned, we will secure a radio booth for you guys to set up a whole broadcasting area. And then if you need more camera locations on fields and everything, I can work with you guys to set those up in advance for any logistics. But yes, that's certainly possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christina.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fenway.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. The next item on the agenda is the Vanpool Transportation Update. The mayor's office and the school district have received several phone calls and emails from our families regarding our transportation services from NRT Vanpool. NRT Vanpool provides special education transportation services to our in-district and out-of-district students. The mayor and I want to both apologize to our families regarding the problems they've experienced with NRT Vanpool. This evening, we have our Director of Special Education, Alicia Barosby, and a Director of Pupil Services, Rowan DeManch, here to share some information about this transportation issue.
So as Superintendent Thompson shared, the transportation issues that the district has faced not only have been affecting Fitchburg, have been affecting our surrounding areas as well. The NRT Vanpool Transportation Company is one of the largest, but also has the... Has shared that they have the capacity to support a district of our size. But as we've seen, that's been a consistent issue. They've had staffing issues and the inability to appropriately route or staff the buses, which has impacted our students. And unfortunately, it's our neediest population. They are on... They are on transportation for a reason. So we've been working with the company trying to find some solutions. Obviously, some of this is out of our hands, but that doesn't excuse the issues and that doesn't bring our families any resolution. So we are going to be meeting, we developed a, we'll be sending out a letter tomorrow to all of our families, as well as posting the letter on social media. And it'll have a link. Are you able to share that?
Yep.
The link will allow us to start capturing the information because a lot of our families are making phone calls to the schools or, you know, we have students who go to specialized schools outside of our district. So we don't necessarily always know all of the issues. This will allow us to capture all of the issues that our families are facing. We will be meeting weekly to review these issues. But aside from meeting weekly, someone will be monitoring all of the complaints and get that to the right person to contact the parent to talk about the situation. So each situation will be addressed immediately following the complaint. Then we'll be also working to find additional solutions to help our families. We've talked about various things, I know, you know, such as having our, our families transport and reimbursing them, but that doesn't help all of our families who don't have transportation, for example. So the, the hope with this is that we can start to find some solutions and holding the transportation accountable, the transportation companies accountable because we are in a contract with them. Aside from that, we will also be working to what's called, you know, sending out bids, looking for other transportation companies that can help support us. And that process will be starting in October because we're currently in a contract and the contract is ending with them in June.
Alicia, are we penalizing these bus companies financially for not meeting their obligation?
So there is a part in their contract. The contract has been reviewed now by lawyers as well as the mayor's office. We've been working with the mayor and the, and the office to look at how we can hold them accountable. So some of that will be addressed. And as well as, again, that those holding account, holding the transportation company accountable doesn't necessarily provide alleviation to the families, and that's where that struggle is.
Just trying to get them a little motivation to.
Exactly.
And also, it's not just Fitchburg, you know, as I'm chairman of the CAPS Collaborative, and we use them also, and we also have problems.
Yep, Lemonster, Lunenburg, Air, they're, you know, all of our surrounding areas, Wachusett.
Yeah, Mr. Hughes.
So what's the main issue that you feel the parents are complaining about? Is it pickup time, drop off time, you know, if it's safety?
I have to capture some of the complaints that we've heard of already to make it a little bit easier for parents to just click something to get that complaint in. But it's people unavailable to, no driver for the route. So there's no transportation or it takes a long time for them to set it up. Pick up and drop off, they're late or early. And no, they're not informing parents. And we've had a couple of situations where they've called the parents and said, we dropped them off at school, but now we have nobody to pick them up. So it's, some of them are pretty egregious concerns.
Yes.
What, how many people are we talking about here? How many complaints, how many involving, how many students?
Probably average five to six complaints a school day right now.
At the beginning of the school year, it's always a little bit more. But on the average, it's about, yeah, I would say about that.
And do you send many students far away with the Keystone Collaborative available around here?
What was that?
Are there many students that go a great distance to get to school?
We have about 147 students who are placed in private or public day schools outside of the district. Ranging from Framingham to Chelmsford.
Even, even with the district providing the Keystone Collaborative option?
Yep. And some of the Keystone schools are outside of Fitchburg as well.
Yeah, the only Keystone school in Fitchburg, there's only one location over on Fitchburg, Electric Ave.
Yes, Mr. Walsh. I drove for Vanpool for a year up until COVID hit. And, and when COVID hit and we stopped, kids stopped going to school in person. Just response to your question. I would pick up a monitor about 5:30 in the morning. We would drive to Worcester to two group homes to pick up three students and to bring them to Fitchburg High to go to school. And I, I didn't pick them up in the afternoon. Somebody, hopefully somebody else did, somebody else did. But when I stopped driving and kids stopped coming to school, I guess I wondered about those three kids. What, what were they doing? What was happening? And there were times where they would add other pickups or drop offs that then made my van and my, my monitor late for the, the next one to pick up. And I felt bad. I showed up every day at work, both in the morning and the afternoon. And it is too bad that, I, I talked to somebody actually who I went to high school with, and they have a daughter with special needs. She's now an adult. But she said, she talked to a number of parents just about these issues that you're raising, that sometimes their student gets dropped off so late, they, they can't get ahold of anybody to find out where their child is. And it's very, be very frustrating for any parent regardless of the age of their child or the special needs or no special needs, not knowing where your child is and nobody to tell you where the van is or even not to let you know that we're going to be late today. And I, I think it's good that what you're preparing to do, and as Mr. Stevens said, I hope, again, it doesn't solve the issue, but there, there should be some financial penalties to the bus company when you can't keep a schedule, knowing that when school starts and when school ends to get your, your children in your van to the place where they have to be, whether it be home or to another daycare facility at the end of the day where their parents come maybe two hours later to pick them up. So I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
You know what, what, excuse me, what they, what we're experiencing here is a monopoly. And the monopoly is inefficient.
That's right.
To say the least. They're almost arrogant about it. So I wish it were as simple as to say, okay, when your contract's up, you're gone. There's nobody else. You know, Tommy, I mean, you probably know, you're in that business. I mean, that's part of the, that's a, the chief reason why we're having a problem here. I mean, I'd love to kick them to the curb, but there's nobody else out there.
On that large of a scale, you know, there's always ways to address it. And I'm sure that, that there's a larger organization, so they know that there are ways to address the issue. They can subcontract the work out to smaller companies that has the capacity to, you know, maybe not do a hundred, fifty people, but they can do 20. You know what I mean? To make sure that we provide the best transportation services for our students that we possibly can. It probably comes down to dollars and cents, like, no, yeah, no, we're not giving our money away to anyone. You know what I mean? Until we make a decision, we're going to enforce financially, some financial penalties. And then either pay the penalties or sub it out and get other companies, you know, smaller companies, there's probably 10 vendors in the city that specialize in non-emergency medical transportation and, and they take people to the day, adult day programs, some to the youth programs and things like that. So there are companies that have a lot of experience, I'm sure, that would, would love to be a part of, of this, you know, potential opportunity. But Vanpool's going to have to open up and says, hey, we're over our head, we need help. You know, because there are a lot of, a lot of people that, you're right, a lot of people just not coming to work. For whatever reason, I'll go in the morning, but somebody yelled at me, I don't want to go this afternoon, I don't have to. You know, for whatever, I don't know what the reasons are, but still not good enough, you know, we got to get these kids home. Got to get them home safely and in a timely manner.
And I think just to circle back, I know you had mentioned like when parents don't know where their kids are. I know that CPAC has been advocating to, to Vanpool to have the GPS systems put on. I believe there's some system on the larger buses that people, parents can go on and track my buses, my kid's on bus 17, and they can track where it is. So I think that they, they are advocating, and we've been mentioning that to Vanpool as well. They don't have the system currently, but they are looking into that.
The school in Boston, they're doing that now. You, when you go on the bus, you're registered. And when you get off the bus, it lets the parent know when they get off the bus. And so that system is available. But I think, Mr. Hughes, I, you know, I think years ago, we used to do some independent contractors, and I don't think we're doing that anymore. One person might drive somebody every day, just like an Uber, you know?
Well, and that's why we're going out to bid so early. So if we have to use multiple small vendors to secure routes, then that's what we will do. We were left in the situation where Vanpool, who was bought out by NRT, bought up a lot of the smaller vendors around the area, which became the problem. But that's why we're going to go out to bid so early, so that these smaller companies can look at maybe expanding and getting bigger. They'd have that time to do that, and then they'd secure work through us. So that's why we're going to, we're going to be working hard on that this year and hopefully getting those routes very secure.
So instead of one big contract, some individual routes that people could bid on. Maybe they could do one, two, three routes.
Absolutely. You know, you, there's a number of ways you could do it. You just have one vendor work with each school, you know, different vendor work with each school. And that way, a vendor's not going from Fitchburg High down, trying to rush and drop somebody off and get back to Crocker or whatever, you know what I mean? So no, this is your school, you have 20 students at this school. You know, and then they bid on, on that portion of it, you know what I mean? Just divide and conquer, you know?
I don't know if it's something, Mr. Hughes, but he's a good, contact Mr. Hughes, he's a good person. He knows the business.
I, I just wanted to clarify, what was, what are you hoping that you can accomplish here tonight?
So we wanted to share with the community the link that will be posted tomorrow, both on social media as well as, I will be emailing that out tomorrow. It'll be, right now it's titled "Transportation Complaints", but we're going to retitle it "Special Ed Transportation Complaints", so that people know that this is the form to, to utilize. Once a parent issues a complaint through this system, it allows us to gather all of the information in one place. Once a parent complains, we will have somebody monitoring on a regular basis and sending that information to the person at the school who can address the immediacy of the issue. But on top of that, we will be meeting on a weekly basis as a cabinet with the superintendent, assistant superintendent, both assistant superintendents to review the complaints and concerns, as well as start holding NRT accountable, kind of based on these situations.
And where will that be? Where will they find that? On what site?
We will be posting it on all social media for Fitchburg Public Schools. So both the Fitchburg Public School page and as well as the Facebook page and Instagram.
And what was the last one?
Instagram.
Oh, Instagram, okay.
Will it also be on the school district's website?
Yes. Yep. And I will be emailing it to families as well.
Any other questions?
I hope we get good results.
Thank you.
I hope I can come back with so much enthusiasm.
And I also, if you need, if I can be of any assistance communicating with Vanpool, because sometime they respond differently. They know someone knows the business. You know what I mean? So say, listen, don't give me, you can't get it done.
Yeah, and luckily Donna Hildreth, Donna Hildreth has been really helpful as well. Her knowledge base around transportation too, but I do appreciate that. We may touch base.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, I'd like to invite our Director of 21st Century and Unified Arts, Jen Fisher, up to review our summer program.
Hello, everyone. We had a great summer. I'll go through all the details, but we did serve almost 19% of our student population in our summer programs this summer. 19%. Callie and I were going through the numbers. She was like, add this up again. So it worked out to be about 19%. Our first program was our High School Summer Pursuits, and Kathy Hytenin was the coordinator for that program. We worked, we collaborated with Mass Hire for our high school students. They applied for a summer, summer pursuits through the Youth Works, Youth Employment Program. They were, they participated in a paid short-term programming that really focused on practicing, training in soft scores, soft core, soft core skills, excuse me, practicing professional behavior and learning how to work within a supervisor. This was some skills that really we did in-house at Fitchburg High this summer and working with coworkers. So it was really, it was a great stepping stone for the kids to understand what their career pathways could look like and what, what it's like to have a job. It's kind of like having a job with training wheels. So some of the activities that they had, I can go to the next slide. One of my favorite courses was the Adulting 101. So the students learned basic adulting skills, how to cook, how to sew buttons. They did quilting, cooking and shopping. So they were able to kind of get out there and practice some of those adulting skills. We were also, we worked with Fresh Films, which was really exciting. That, part of that program was funded by the United Way through their Out of School Time Grant that came through this summer. They worked with Mr. Bruno Rodriguez to create like videos. And they did a cooking show, which was hilarious. It is posted on our, our social media page on Facebook. It's actually pretty good. Seeing the kids really improve with their filmmaking skills, so they're really tackling writing skills. They're tackling their communication skills, and they're throwing in humor on top of it. So the kids, and Bruno did a beautiful job really stepping up the quality of the equipment that the kids have access to at the high school. So Bruno does the film class for the school year as well. But it's really great to see the kids go through the whole process of developing a storyboard to actually producing a TV show. And one of the kids, they based it on like a cooking show and it's like, almost like a real life. You have to watch it. It's really funny.
It really is, yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty funny. And the quality of, the quality of the projects are getting better. This is our second summer with them. Last year I was a little like, should we put this on social media? But now it's, it's much, they're getting much more fine tuned. The next group, which was really cool, we have an unbelievable animation teacher at Fitchburg High. The stuff that he pulls out of these kids is incredible. So not only are they telling stories, but they're creating their characters to go along with these stories. And they're really using some high-end technology to do the animation project. So they, they really get that hands-on experience to see, well, maybe this can tie in with the film program or maybe this is something I want to try as I go out and look for careers. It's just, it's a whole different world when you get into that classroom. It's just the stuff that they have access to. And then we had our robotics program, and this was a pretty small but mighty group that they continued working on some STEM activities and using, building up on their STEM skills and really working on the robotics program that we had in place. There wasn't any competition going on this summer, but they did compete against each other. But it was an opportunity for the kids to really spend a day. Instead of just like having one period or coming after school, they could spend the day just doing robotics. So, and again, reinforcing those STEM skills. Then we had, oh, in that program, we had 71 students participating. For our high school and middle school credit recovery program, being a former assistant principal for a middle school, the summer programming is really important to help those kids that were having trouble coming to school or just needed a little extra boost academically. So when Kim Rodriguez and Cranley Rodriguez from Memorial came to me and said, hey, do you think we can do a summer like credit recovery program for the middle school kids? I said, sure, I talked to John, we got it going. And last year we. I said, sure, I talked to John. We got it going. And last year we did it really just, we had the kids do edgenuity and it was a lot of computer time and it didn't really work. So Kim took the bull by the horn. She was the coordinator. She developed a really nice comprehensive middle school credit recovery program where they did some math stuff based on what the kids I Ready scores was. They did some ELA stuff personalized through I Ready. And then she created this book study on restart. And what restart is about is this boy falls off a roof and he has amnesia. But before he fell off the roof, he was actually a bully and a big football player kind of star kid. So it talks about the challenges of like you lost your memory, you go back to school after you're better and then you realize, oh my God, I was that kid. So there was a lot of great discussions, a lot of social skills were brought into that conversation. We had sixty-five students participate in that program. One of the biggest challenges post-COVID was the kids were like, oh, I don't need to go to school. So we had seventy-five kids last summer, the summer before last. This summer, the number dropped to sixty-five. So we're hoping maybe that number will decrease next year, that the kids realize that they have to come to school and not get stuck at credit recovery. But overall, the kids really did enjoy it. One of my friend's sons actually participated and he, he was raving about how much he loved it. So just again reinforcing the skills that they already know. And then throwing in this novel to do a book study, they did it all together as one big group. So it was really a fun conversation the kids could have. And then we had our typical Pittsburgh High Credit Recovery Program. Steve Launey was the coordinator. We had a hundred and ten high school students participating in that. Ms. Schmidt behind me, she was part of that and they, they just ran it. It just ran smooth. The kids were in and out of the library. They could work on whatever they needed to get caught up, to get their credits. So the high school program really has more impact on the kids' academics than the middle school program. But it's still a really important part so the kids can get caught up and stay with their classmates and continue on that way. Then our elementary and middle school programs, which is my favorite. We had two hundred and fifty elementary and two hundred and fifty middle school students participate. I didn't expect, I only expected a hundred and fifty middle schoolers to show up or register, but we had two hundred and fifty, which kind of blew me away. The online registration that we put out through the Google Forms, it filled up in like two and a half days. Like I had eight hundred responses in two and a half days. And that really shows me that there's such a huge need for quality care and programming for our students. And the parents were really like, is there any room? Can you get my kid in? And, you know, I hate turning anyone away, but we have to plan on funding and how are we going to do the staffing? And one thing I love about Pittsburgh is the teachers are always willing to come and work in the summertime. We never have a problem hiring staff. We do do a Monday through Thursday program. It's eight to two. We kind of trim the hours down a little bit. The first time we did this program post-COVID, we did eight to four and it was just too long of a day. But we did be able to get some really cool field trips in because it was a longer day. One of the things that, well, transportation was included. Breakfast and lunch were provided just like a school day. We did take the kids to Mirror Lake once a week to go swimming, which our students don't always have access to that kind of beach experience. So it was a great social opportunity for them to hang out and chat and talk with one another. The middle school kids just kind of stand in the water and talk to one another. It kind of kills me. But then we also have kids that, middle school kids that play in the sand still and, you know, they, they play four square. The elementary kids love it because they can kind of do their own thing, but they also have the swim time. So we get, by the time we get down to Mirror Lake, they have probably like an hour to swim and then they'll have some lunch and then they have like another hour after lunch just to continue to swim. And then they're going to hit the buses to get back for like a one thirty, quarter to dismissal. So it's just enough, but the kids come back dragging their wagons and you can tell it was a lake day for some of them because they just looked so tired. The teachers do an afternoon enrichment activity, which is a choice activity for the students. So it could have been anything from STEM to creative writing to games. And, you know, we had a great sports program. So like that was always a big hit was if I could open up just a sports program, I could fill it every summer with probably four hundred kids. It, it's not, this is that much need. Our coordinators for the elementary kids was Marcus Kitchen and Heather Pont. Heather is a middle school teacher over at Long Joe. She was using some of this time. She wants to be an administrator. Sue DiGiorno and Sam DePonte were our middle school coordinators. So for the elementary program, I wanted to add some more literacy because our, our goal for the Twenty First Century program is really working on our ELA skills. And Mr. Thompson came to me and he said, hey, check out this Scholastic Camp Lit program. So I talked to the sales rep and I really looked through the materials and they really make it like you're at camp reading a novel as a group, like in your bunk. The program was really well received by the teachers. I'm curious to see once I get my data back, like how our kids did on I Ready in the spring, took the I Ready, the Camp Lit program and how they do in the spring, the fall, testing to see if there's any growth with the kids for ELA. But they were completely engaged. You can see they, they had different activities that they could play. The, they created like this little fire pit with the little painted rocks. That was another activity that went along with it. But the kids really loved it. They were kind of in these little hammocks in some of the classrooms. The teachers did a great job making it a fun environment for the kids to do their reading and they had a lot of great discussion around their novels and the skills that they were working on. And I thought it went really well. I was really pleased with it. We did partner with Audubon and Mount Wachusett. Mount Wachusett actually came and ran a changemaker group for the middle school kids. But Audubon, we love Audubon. They take the kids out and they go hiking and they were hiking behind Pittsburgh High and they've taken them up to right on top of.
Flat Rock?
Flat Rock, yes. So, and for a lot of our students, they don't get out in the woods a lot. So I feel like this is a great opportunity for them to really go and use their observation skills and just kind of be out in nature together. Lauren Mountain was really pivotal in creating a changemaker visit at the mount. So the kids were going around to different stations and of course she was plying them with ice cream and bouncy houses. But they also get to see like the fitness area, what it was like to be at Mount Wachusett. So it was really a great opportunity for our elementary and middle school kids to go see the mount for, they went for the day. We had another group come in. This is our first time. The Girl Scouts reached out to me last year and we had kind of a pilot program. They run four different kind of series where they'll come into the schools and do a social emotional lesson or an arts and crafts activity based on, I don't know if anyone needs some water? But this, this activity, they were able to earn their badges in their, their uniforms. It was offered to all the students and it was primarily the girls that participated. So they were very excited about this activity. Excuse me. Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Have another one if you need to.
I'm not used to using my teacher voice or my assistant principal voice. I've been working with the Starbase folks since I was a science teacher and it's one of the best STEM programs that's available and it's free. So Peter at Starbase reached out to me and he said, I'd like to offer a specialized program for our ELL students, for your ELL students. So the students were able to go with Mrs. Sweet, Ms. Sweet, we had twelve students in that group. They went to hands command force base every day. They participated in their STEM experience, which the stuff that these kids do is just amazing. They had twenty-five hours of challenging, exciting, open-ended guided inquiry activities. Again, it's all the science that, I mean, the stuff that these kids are doing, the robotics. I don't know if you can see the kid on the, the green mat is a Lego structure that they put together that they program. But there's a lot of really great computer stuff, like they had to build a molecule. They actually built a ship, a spaceship. And one of the things that Peter and I kind of giggle at is the kids don't know how to use a mouse. They're so used to using their mouse pad that they don't know how to use a mouse. So they have to spend some time teaching the kids, re-acclimating them to how to use a mouse. But it's a great, it's a great time for the kids. And now Mrs. Sweet, she's an ELL teacher at Memorial is like, Jen, can we bring our sixth and seventh graders? Like, so we're going to work on trying to hook the kids up for a Starbase experience for the, hopefully, fifth graders up to seventh grade. We'll make it work. I just reached out to Peter today. So hopefully we can make that happen. Our middle school kids, we were, they had activities that they could pick as STEM, art, sports or drama. And then the teachers created enrichment activities. Sports at the middle school level is huge. We had quite a few students that just wanted to do sports all day, but we had to kind of break it up because you can't have, you know, that many students in the field house all at one time. It's just chaos. So the middle school kids wouldn't let me take a lot of pictures of them. So that's why I only have two pictures. They, they were kind of putting their hands up and they weren't really great pictures. So I didn't want to use those. Emily Barrett at Memorial is one of the best drama teachers. She's amazing. She pulled off the Little Mermaid production with about thirty kids. And again, this was packed. It was filled even before I knew it. So kids from Rhangold and our Rhangold After School Program, they have a pretty robust drama program. So those kids moved up into this program that were going into sixth grade. And there was one student who played Ariel that just, I thought it was a recording. She sung so well when I was out in the lobby hanging out, getting stuff registered. Just amazing. And the diversity of the cast, just from boys to girls and they just, unbelievable how well they did this. And they pulled it off in four weeks. Like it just blew me away. They pulled together as a group. So we had kids that worked as actors, set designers, lights, sound. And the folks up at Pittsburgh High were so great to let us use some of their materials for drama. It was just, it was a spectacular show. I can't say enough about what they did. And then I wrote a grant for the, through the United Way, again, for the out-of-school-time grant. And Matt Puma, who was a former science teacher here in the district, and Kim Femenesis, did this, Kim works now at the Hanover. She does a STEAM program. So she's been kind of reaching out to me, showing me all this great stuff. So I wanted our students to be able to have this opportunity. So they were able to go to the Hanover twice a week. They participated in Kim's program. Her thing was really showing the kids how a theater works. So these middle school kids got a chance to tour the Hanover Theater. They got to see the underneath. They got to see behind the scenes, up at the lights, the sound. And their goal was to create a model theater. The one in the middle of this picture is one that high school kids did. They worked so hard on this that the final projects didn't quite get finished and I didn't really want to put them out there yet. But they did do a ton of math. They were doing things to scale. They researched Homer's Odyssey, which is a pretty heavy-duty poem for the middle school kids. But they were really wanted to get into it. So they were able to go to the Worcester Library, which is right next door to the Hanover, and they were just blown away by the size of that library. And they were able to use the resources there. So they did some research. They came back with their books and they kind of figured out what they wanted to do. And this is kids going into sixth up to ninth grade. We were very lucky to get Marcus Kelly, who's a recent graduate at Pittsburgh High, to work as an assistant to Mr. Puma. He's going off to U Lul to be an engineer. So I'm trying to bring him to the dark side of teaching, but I don't think it's going to work. So this is a really proud point for me because I, I wanted to make sure these kids got an opportunity. Just even going into Worcester two days a week, it was great. They were, the Hanover had some outdoor concerts that the kids were able to experience too. So it worked out really well that the kids got a really well-rounded experience in Worcester and then some really good STEM STEAM stuff going on during the class time. I wish it would have been eight weeks, but we could get four. And then we had our Journeys program. Kelly Morrison's the director, the coordinator of the Journeys program. Again, this is a totally academic enrichment program. The students, for students going into first and second grade. We had a hundred and fifty students participate. I started off with only allowing seventy-five. That blew up. I went to John, I said, I don't, I don't know. This, this a hundred and fifty is like, we'll figure it out. Just bring them in. And again, so blessed with the Pittsburgh Public Schools teachers. We were able to staff it pretty quickly. So the kids had a great time. They went to Friendly Farm in Dublin, Hampshire. So they get to hang out and see a real working farm. And then Zozo the Dash Hound came, the, if you look to the right, the lady standing up, she's the author of this, of this little children's picture book and she brought the dog with her and the kids loved that. So anytime you bring dogs and animals together with kids, it's a great fit. And then we had our end of the summer Palooza Field Day. And I just thought this was like summer program in, in just a nutshell. But I wanted to thank the school committee and central office and staff, the school administrators and our FBS staff, teachers, paras, our custodians, the lunch folks, they just made this program really hum. They had a great time and it really supports the kids' academic growth and social skills growth. But it was overall a wicked good summer. So we had a great time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Questions for Jen?
Any questions?
Just a comment. I wish more people watched school committee meetings, but a meeting like this tonight, what's been presented by what you do to coordinate this, the people who work with you, for people to see what our teachers do and how much something like this, and it's not just one thing, one size fits all. There's a variety of things for all the different kids who have different interests and needs. I, I think people don't really appreciate or understand what happens in our school, what great things happen in our school and the fact that we have great staff from central office to teachers to paras to, as you said in that thank you slide. And I just want to thank you for presenting it. And I hope people who are watching tonight tell their friends to come back and see what happens with our students in the summer. So thank you very much. And thank you to everybody who participated.
I just realized while you were talking, I completely left out the whole special ed program, which is huge. Again, getting to all the kids' needs, you know, Heather Root does an amazing job. And I apologize, Heather, I didn't put slides together for you, but she just, her staff is just so dedicated and they, they run, they run a tight ship and they go eight to twelve, Monday through Thursday. And they go for five weeks instead of our four. But yeah, they, we try to make sure that we have something for every kid. It's really, it's, it was a good, it was a great summer.
No, I just want to thank Jen and all the staff and the coordinators and the teachers involved. This process began, I think, in December last year.
I think Thanksgiving we started.
It was, it was very early. And this takes several months to coordinate and it's not an easy task. So thank you, Jen, and all your staff. And I think one of the things I want to echo that Jen said is we do not have problems in Pittsburgh to get, for getting our teachers and staff to work in the summer. I speak to other superintendents and they can't hold summer programs because they do not have the staff who actually want to work. So kudos to our staff. That says a lot about our teachers and our, our schools. So thank you very much. I appreciate that.
So I'll be scheduling a meeting in November with you guys to plan.
I think Dr. Knight, is that you, the other John Thompson on the call?
Yes, yes. I just wanted to say to Jen, thank you so much for all that you do for the students at Pittsburgh High School. I really appreciate it. I know everybody does. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Knight. I appreciate the kind words.
I don't think sometimes people realize how important the summer program is. They don't realize how much that students lose over the summer. And this really keeps them going. And you talked about nineteen percent of the students. So that's a good percentage of the teachers also and staff that.
And trying, and for our special ed teachers that, even our parent professionals, they would be scheduled to work like, say, eight to twelve. And then I would always try to find extra hours for those pairs that wanted, that needed more money. So I was like, yeah, sure. We'll find something for you to do. We had one, we had two pairs that, just to get the kids on their vans. So we had the big buses picking up back and then we had the vans coming up to the court, that little circle area in front of the high school and just coordinating parent pickup and bus and van pickup. Like there's always something for folks to do and they would grab their clipboards. They'd go down and get all their kids and make sure they were all herded into their vans and parents. So it does take a team and I'm very lucky that I have such an incredible team. And like I said, the, the staff in Pittsburgh is just unbelievably talented and just dedicated to our kids. So we're very lucky.
Thank you, Jen.
Thanks again.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for providing access like beyond the academics. I think it's really important for our families who don't often get to provide individualized experiences to their children, you know? And someone like myself who, you know, my parents kind of struggled with having the opportunities to understand what is available in the community around them. So I just appreciated that there were opportunities to be able to experience life in the outdoors, to be able to experience partnerships with different community, extended community partners so that students can at least be aware of what exists in the community and also bring that back home to families and really talk about that so that they can learn from their children, you know? And it really becomes like a two-way communication and, you know, opportunity for learning. So thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, everyone. Stay dry. All right, well, good, thank you, everyone, stay dry.
All right, I'll be brief. The next item I wanted just to give the school committee and the community an update on the first week of school. So the first week of school, as we all know, was last week, and we have a few photos, a collage we put together with all the students coming back into the buildings and working throughout the day. Mother Nature did not cooperate, as we all know, she decided to have summer come back and actually have a summer last week, and we had very high temperatures. I just want to thank all the students and families for their patience and understanding. I received a lot of calls either to cancel school, to have an early release, or keep school on. And, you know, ultimately, I decided to make sure that kids had structure, and I kept school open. That being said, we tried our best to provide additional water for all buildings and all students. In addition to, we purchased additional fans throughout our schools. Again, it's not, it wasn't the best, but it is what we could do. So I just wanted to make sure everyone really understands that we are thankful we were able to keep our doors open. And thank you to all the students, families, and our staff for making last week the best first week of school. So like I said, just a few photos to share, opening, opening week. One of the things I did want to say is, before I move on, just, we did have a few hiccups. Transportation, again, was an issue. We do ask that, especially for our youngest students, that parents, please make sure we have the most up-to-date transportation information for your child. We had a few students get on the wrong bus because information either was lost or wasn't updated. We just want to make sure everyone gets home safe every day. So please make sure you call your school and double-check what transportation we have marked down for dismissal. I want to provide everyone with a quick enrollment update, so where we are right now. So currently, as of this morning, we're at five thousand four hundred and twenty-four students in Pittsburgh Public Schools. Currently, I mean, sorry, last year, we ended the year off with five thousand four hundred and three students, so we are up about twenty-one students, and we have several more students to process. So our enrollment is up, and that is actually a good thing, in my opinion. But the other thing that you need to realize is that we do not have school choice open this year for pre-K to eight. We closed school choice. So our numbers are actually increasing without the additional school choice students coming into Pittsburgh pre-K to eight. So I just wanted to make everyone aware of that.
That's good, Jen, the October first enrollment is what our funds are dedicated on.
So right now, we are, we are seeing an increase right now, so. And I will provide you with that number as we continue to move forward closer to October first. And then lastly, just a quick update, we still have several vacancies available here in the district. Several hard-to-fill positions, like science for biology, mathematics. In addition to, we have several paraprofessional openings still. So a complete list is available at the address below. Pittsburgh utilizes Talent Ed to post all their positions. So if you are interested in working for the Pittsburgh Public Schools, please take a look at this website and apply. And last but not least, before I move on, I just want to share that I am having something called superintendent hours this year in order to increase communication with families in the community and teachers. I will be offering open hours to anyone who would like to meet with me. It will be held on the first Wednesday of every month from four to six P.M., and then the third Monday of every month from eight to ten A.M. Anyone can schedule a meeting with me. All you have to do is call my administrative assistant, Mary Alexandra Molina, and she will schedule a time for anyone to meet with me. So that is available to anyone who would like to meet with myself. Any questions? All right. And the last item on my report this evening is regarding our Director of Finance and Operations, Jeremy Roach. I would like to make a recommendation to change Mr. Jeremy Roach's title from Director of Finance and Operations to Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations. I am recommending this title change to reflect Mr. Roach's work in managing all of the district finances, building facilities, especially the extensive construction projects happening throughout the district. I am pleased with Mr. Roach's work ethic and ability to learn the finance and operations side of education over the last year. In the past, we've had two assistant superintendents. Previously, former Superintendent Jokla held the position of Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations before moving to the superintendent's role. Former Assistant Superintendent Apal Giaquinto held the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning position, which Glenda Cologne currently holds. It is not uncommon to have both of these positions at the superintendent level. Mr. Roach's title change is simply a title change, there will not be changes in his benefits or compensation. Any questions on the title change for Mr. Roach? That is an action item tonight.
How much, how much of an increase is he gonna get in salary? I got an email that told me he was gonna get an increase in salary, how much increase is he gonna get?
There is no increase.
Oh, no increase, oh, somebody had their information wrong.
Radical, isn't it? How could that happen?
I don't know how that happened.
Any questions from the committee on my recommendation? All right, last but not least, we have, I actually had four donations to accept, but we have decided to table the first donation for discussion, and I have three donations this evening. The first donation is from Lummester Credit Union with the estimated value of five hundred dollars. This includes twenty backpacks and school supplies that will be distributed to our students. The second donation is from Zilis America, which is with the estimated value of three hundred and fifty dollars. This includes ten backpacks and school supplies that will be distributed to our students. And last but not least, we have a donation from Access Communication with an estimated value of seven hundred dollars. This is also including a hundred backpacks and school supplies that will be distributed to our students.
We're at that time.
Wish to bundle or?
Yes.
Make a motion to bundle items twenty-three dash two-nine-two through twenty-three dash two-nine-five.
Second motion?
We're not
We're skipping that one.
We are.
Yeah, we're just standing there.
Okay. Motion made in second, to bundle. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous?
Make a motion to approve the bundle?
Motion made in second to approve the bundle, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous, thank you.
Motion for adjournment.
Before we adjourn, I just would like to address the school committee before we adjourn, if possible. The Pittsburgh Public Schools leadership and myself are here to work together as a team with the school committee this year. We have a common goal of doing what is the best, what is in the best interest of our students and families. And as members of the school committee, you represent the voice of our community. We want to ensure that we partner as a united team to address the opportunities that our experiences in the community have afforded us. We have strengths and challenges, as many other school districts, and know that the best way to meet the needs of our community is to work as a team. We are excited to share and receive feedback on how we can strengthen our school system. So we look forward to working with you this year. So I just wanted to mention that before we, you know, before we continue to work forward and move forward this year. So I appreciate each and every one of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion for adjournment.
Motion made for adjournment.
Second.
And seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.